Okay, so now we're gonna go back to the top of the agenda, consent agenda items. And that's from the special board meeting on 12/16. And 12/2, Finance Capital Committee, 11/25. We have a motion to approve those agendas, or those minutes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those who abstain? Board orders?
So I reviewed the board orders in the back of your agenda, created the number first in 2015. And we will recommend this award, thank you for those board orders. We'll move.
No further discussion? All those in favor of approving the board orders, say aye.
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 Aye. Those who abstain? Legislative updates. How do they go?
One pager that will make sure this circulates its world. But a couple noteworthy items took place in the past week. As many of you know, legislative sessions kicked off. The governor did give his inaugural address last week. And there was some foreshadowing around what's to come. Some of the highlights around education-related proposals that came up during the address was a new formula. So a student-centered funding formula, which is essentially a foundation formula, is going to be pitched. So we'll be sure to bring it up to speed as more details on that come out. He promised a policy for new governance that would be simpler while delivering more equality across communities. The governor signaled more guidance and support to administrators to reduce cost pressures. He also highlighted that school boards can stay to the 5.9% increase that's projected in the December 1st tax letter. That his budget would actually lower that with a goal of eliminating it. So again, some foreshadowing around what's to come in the governor's budget proposal. This includes links to the transcripts and upcoming testimony. And then one other point of emphasis is just the Agency of Education concluded its Listen and Learn Tour. There's a summary report that's somewhere around 140 pages, much of its appendix just detailing out all the engagement status tests that took place. But there are a number of themes which were highlighted in the conclusion of the report. I'll touch upon some of those. One, Vermonters believe in a holistic definition of student success. Resource sharing, regionalization of services, or consolidation should be considered as a means to increase educational opportunities for students and to address budget sustainability. And they noted that would be particularly true at the secondary level. And they noted, schools are increasingly serving as a hub for community and social services, which goes well beyond their traditional goal to educate students. And perhaps unsurprising, they acknowledge there is a need for greater state leadership and intentional focus on building stakeholder trust in the Agency of Education. So acknowledging there's some room for improvement there. And opportunities to beef up AOE as the support legislative mandates. So that's it. We'll get this circulated to everybody so you can check the links out.
Thank you. The policy review, this is what Kat usually brings us down through and tells us whether there's changes or not, to see if she's out in the hallway. We can all read, we can all take a look at them. This is the first reading. Take a look at them again next time around, so be aware that those are in the pocket. Ratifying a teacher master agreement.
So as Eric mentioned earlier, the board negotiating committee has met for the last few months with the Teachers Association and had what I believe was amicable, productive, and successful contract negotiation. We very much appreciate the cooperation and the hard work of the Teachers Association in coming to this agreement. The bottom-line financial agreement in year one was an increase of $40,000 to base. And in year two, $41,200 to the base and one step to the grid. And we are looking forward to this master agreement.
Have a second. Any discussion? What I'll say, period, is same thing I said the other night when we were talking about it. As we get to understand the school funding formula in the state, where all of our money goes down to Montpelier, gets redistributed out. We have really, really good teachers here. We want to keep them here. If those teachers should happen to go someplace else, the fun part of that fact is our tax dollars are following them into the next school. Because that's the way that money gets distributed at the state level. And Deb has mentioned to us numerous times over the year that we deal with a state budget. If you've all watched that YouTube video on how we're funded, pay attention to it. Because it's pretty scary when your own money is ending up as a tuition cost over in Maine. Or it's over in New York. So I think this is a really good contract. I think we should ratify it without any question. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of ratifying our teacher contracts, say aye.
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 Aye. Those who abstained? Okay, we ratified it. Out of discussion?
Raimi, you have...
We promised you a look at the VT cap data in January, and here we are. So, next slide. Just to ground us, the educational quality standards will be going into effect July 1st, 2025, and have been adopted by the Vermont State Board of Education. They name all of these things as data that school systems should be looking at. Academic data, that's what we're looking at tonight. Graduation attendance rates, enrollment data, social-emotional well-being data, discipline data, special education data. We're just focusing on one type tonight. Go ahead to the next slide. We're gonna look at the VT cap. It is a summative assessment taken once a year. The testing window is late March, early April. And just so you know, unlike previous assessments like the S-Back, we don't get items that they've released or progress monitoring so that we can actually see the examples of questions. We don't really know what the questions look like very much. There's a practice test, but we know it doesn't quite look like the actual test. So here are our results by grade level. As you can see, our math is a bit behind the ELA scores. We went over this more in depth with the Curriculum Committee. If you look at our NWEA MAPS growth scores, what you can see is that our students make a fair amount of growth in math, but start off lower, sort of raise those up. We're gonna look at how to make even more growth. And we can go on to the next slide. I just decided to put out some highlights, and Johnson is an area that I've been getting some questions about lately. So I have two data highlights from there. Other months, we can highlight other schools. 67% of economically disadvantaged sixth-grade students at Johnson met proficiency in reading. It's the highest percent of success for economically disadvantaged students anywhere in the district. And in a recent survey at Johnson, on a question that asked my teacher, "Exacme for who I am at school", students answered 4.4 out of 5. Five being, "I strongly agree". The next slide. There was an increase in the percent of students on the VT cap who are proficient in fourth grade in spring of 2024. This may be associated with an increased evidence on evidence-based literacy practices that we've been using in the lower grades. And more gains are likely possible with continued effort on our part. We know that our scores have variability in our schools, and we're putting measures in place to get more consistency. We're looking at our multi-tiered system of support systems. And that means that we're gonna work on teaching well in the first place and follow that up with high-quality intervention. We're looking at professional development in literacy and math. That includes both having the American Reading Company come in, and they're doing job-embedded coaching for five days, as well as the work that's happening at the high school with Red House Learning and working with All Learners Network in math. And we're also looking at, we've been working on having a consistent system of supervision and evaluation across the district. I think that's the end.
Any questions?
Yes.
Can you go back to the score slide?
Yep.
Because is there any other... Struggle with maybe what to compare? Are there other benchmarks to compare this to, statewide benchmarks? And now you mentioned the grade four. Year-over-year, is there other data that we should look at?
Well, how it compares to how the state is doing?
Yeah.
I haven't seen yet, I don't, I think they still have their scores officially embargoed. I have not seen yet the statewide results. I told you I would bring this back in January, so I am. So it's interesting, they're coming out very slowly with this, with this test. I think the deeper look we did, the NWA MAPS data that we looked at more fully in the Curriculum Committee is a national test, and we can get some more national comparisons. I can send you that if you're interested.
So I'm gonna go out of bounds for just a second. I've got a few of you sitting in your public comment, if you will. Any questions about what you're seeing? Percent of what?
That's the percent of students who were proficient.
None of them were 50%.
Yep.
Our students are not proficient in anything.
Yes, yes, and it's hard to know where that stands compared to other things. It's not enough, I recognize that. We need to raise those. It's very interesting if you look at, combine this with the NWEA MAPS scores, and you would see that we actually make quite a bit of gains in math, but we start off low. And then in reading, we don't make as many gains, but we start off higher. So it's, it's very interesting if you compare this with other data about what's actually happening, if you take a deeper dive. Yeah.
I just wanted to add, this being the first year of this test too, we don't have anything to compare it to, you know? Because everything is a testing system.
Right.
Makes a big difference, you know? Different system previously.
It'll make the context of this so different over the course of time, so we can compare that.
Why is eighth grade math at 12%? I think it might be seven. You have an inbox of this thing all coming in. You know what I mean?
Yeah, we, we looked at that. It's, it's a great question. I can't exactly know. I don't know what's on the test. Again, I'm, we're meeting with the math department to put some things into place and doing some work. Looking at common assessments, looking at bringing student work forth. Why is that such a big dip? Is that like that every year, is another question? Again, we don't have many years of this data to look at. I don't think it's that big a dip every year. And so exactly what's going on there, I don't know. But I do know that we're doing continued work at the high school and middle school to work on, work on this.
We have a lack of math teachers? Yeah, at one point. I have a lot of students in the school, and one of my, one of my high school kids had to self-teach him math one year. But he still got a grade for it somehow.
Was it last year?
You know, he said, "I got, I got the credit, but I had to teach myself all year because I'm gonna fall behind." So he wasn't in eighth grade. He's in high school, he's gonna graduate this year. But, I mean, I don't know what that is either. Like, sometimes those tests, that's why I didn't have any questions. I mean, that's my only, like, do we have a lack of math teachers? I'm not saying the ones we have are bad, do we need more? I don't know, you know? So, that's all.
I think we need, it's more coordination, more support, and professional development, and making things more common.
Well, and I think what, what it means by making things more common, every standardized test that comes out has certain standards that are nationally considered. Vermont may not teach to those standards in that year. Massachusetts may not teach to that standard in that year. So we need to know what the test is going to look like. You know, when we had the kneecaps, we knew what that looked like. This is a different beast. So more to come on that. This is new. Great question, though.
So in other words, we don't know what this is measuring.
We have, I can give you a percent of questions that were data and statistics, or the percent of questions that were generally algebra. But I don't know exactly what, that's still broad. Algebra's very broad. You know, you can tell me it's algebra, but there's many, many, many algebra questions you could ask. I don't have an actual example of, of what the actual items look like, if that makes sense.
We don't know what the...
So I don't know. Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem here with this, with this particular...
It'd be wonderful. But I pray for the outsider looking at it, it looks pretty terrible.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you. I hear you.
Now on to the fun.
Give me my little quick... I assume the arrow forward means forward and the arrow back means back? Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, he's very careful.
So, a lot of the package... There's a lot more detail in the package you got. I'm gonna try to go through this quickly. If I'm going too quickly and too broad, slow me down, I will answer questions. The bottom line is, the bottom line is good. The FCC started early in the process, did a lot of work. There have not been changes since then. At the supervisory union in the non-special ed, we're looking at an overall 2.36% change in the assessment. Very reasonable. Salary increases modest at a 5.5. Benefits modest at a 6.23, but buried in that number is a 12% premium increase, which was a hit. Most of your, what you're seeing going up is the health and care, healthcare benefits. There's a huge shift of IT services coming into the SU. So they're more centralized, which ultimately is a savings over the entire district and all the schools. It just looks really big at the SU. And we're assuming that the upgrades to the central, the repairs to the central office will allow an increase of rent out to the secondary district which owns the building. Transportation, it's relatively leveled. Increases in transportation are being found in equipment purchases at Cambridge. And the changes in instruction, it's just we're changing the way, so we have some... We have a lot of people at the SU who actually work in the schools. To get their billing to the schools, we do a bill-back. We're now doing it directly through the expense line and not doing an offsetting revenue. Because it's truly not an earned income. It's a, it's a contra-expense for a couple of accounts. At the special ed service, we're actually looking at 1.5% decrease in the overall special ed. And what's happening here is Jen is working to move a lot of our purchased services back in-house. This is both less expensive. We can see that we have almost 49% decrease in purchase services and a 21% increase in salaries. But it's not only less expensive, it's better services. We have more in-house control of services being evolved and can act with more fidelity when changes need to be made. Additionally, on top of that, the 173 block grant looks back two years and gives us revenue based on the last two years' expenses. So we've got a little bit of extra block grant coming in for the last two years' expenses at the same time that we're cutting some expenses below. We still, and I'm gonna skip forward to this pie chart because I like it. When you consider transportation a student support or a student service, 84% of the supervisory union budget is instruction and student supports. 10% is what we consider administration, a little bit technology, and then tiny little bit is our facilities expense. This all brings us down to a general ed assessment of 2.1 million. We see the breakdown of the students. And here, what we're doing this year with the advent of the additional income against the reduced expenses at special ed, it sort of gives us a one-time opportunity to take that savings, bring it up to the general. It's all general funds. We've just always separated gen-ed from special ed. We bring some of that special ed savings up into the general ed lines. And that way GMTCC gets to garner some of that savings, that benefit. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to. They, at the same time this fall, have phenomenal growth in their student numbers. And they don't get to recognize additional state on those student numbers until it's been several semesters in, because they do a six-semester rolling average of FTE. And then the special ed assessment, 5.6, the reduction of 1.5%. We can see how it's broken out. We have additional information further down. So are there, are there questions on the supervisory union? I am going very fast.
I'm gonna say the same thing I said to the negotiating team when I said earlier. As we go through these budgets, last year, the elementary schools got trashed by the voters. They wanted us to cut. Everybody needs to understand, so that we go out into the public, every dime that we do not spend in this school district that we budget for and we believe in and gets voted down, goes someplace else. That's as simple as our, that's as simple as a statewide school budget gets. So as our elementary schools' budgets were being voted down, we had four pieces that we could cut from, as you will recall. After-school programs, summer school, summer-summer programs, cafeteria services that we paid for out of our tax dollars. Those are the places that we can cut from, so that hasn't changed at all. However, if we can't go out and let the public know that if you don't pass this budget here, that's okay, we cut. But when we cut, whatever budget passes, Burlington, Newport, Bennington, Brattleboro, all those schools that pass their budgets, get our tax dollars sent to them. Does everybody understand that about the state school funding system? We send our money to Montpelier. Montpelier redistributes it through Act 127. And then it comes back to us after we pass a budget. So if we don't sell this budget publicly that way, it's a guarantee that our students are gonna lose out on the tax dollars that are being paid.
And these budgets are very conservative in light of last year's difficulties. The Finance and Capital Committee was very focused on getting together early, and you'll see this in the next slides. Give us three scenarios. Worst case, cut, no increases, moderate, and, you know, the natural, where everything would fall if we didn't make any changes. And we ended in a great place. But on the supervisory union, and as I say to anybody, you've getting a little, you're getting a little more detail. In the information meetings, there's gonna be a lot more detail. I am always available to sit with you, to talk with you, to come visit with you. If you want to understand a particular line item, or if you still don't get the funding mechanism, we can go over it and over and over. Really, I don't mind that at all. It's important to me that you understand what you're approving and what you're voting on as taxpayers. So if there's no specific questions at this time for the board for adopting, again, it still has to go to the voters in March, but I would ask for a motion to move to adopt as presented.
Let's move.
Any further questions?
Can I ask a question? I don't oppose the budget in any way. I only do this as a community member who's had this, I voted for the budget every time, every time I got rejected, I won't get it. I agree with what you just said, Mark, that it's, we're not helping our community by not voting for it. But the arguments I had with people who kept telling me they were voting no was, there was multiple arguments. And one was, was the administration cost. So just so I understand that math better, principals and directors, are they included in administration costs? Is that part of, no?
Yes and no. Principals are instruction leaders. They're part of instruction.
So their salaries aren't included in that administrative cost?
I'm in administration. Even though she's truly an instruction leader first and foremost, and student services first and foremost. The four people we have that do all of our payroll across the entire supervisory union, as well as all of our accounts payable, all our accounts receivable, all of our financial statements and audits and everything else. We have three individuals who run all the HR issues for, you know, 500-plus employees across the supervisory union. That's all centralized, and that's in that administration.
It's just, it's just for my own information, I'm talking to people because...
Good question, because people don't know what it is.
Well, yeah, they see 1.5 million dollars, and they think that there's four people in this white building down here collecting $300,000 paychecks. I don't know what people get paid, you know? So that's what people say to me. They're like, well, why do we pay that? I don't know what they get paid. So I just wanted to know if principals, and they're not included in that.
They're instruction, they're your instruction team leaders.
I was just curious.
Could you get Mark to explain that one more time? Pretend I'm in eighth grade and I don't understand. I don't!
You got your job, you're done now? Which one?
So, this, this, all this money, all this money. Let me give you the short, Charlie number one, before you leave, give me your email address. I'm gonna send you a link to the YouTube video. Just listen, before you say anything. It's seven and a half minutes long. The first, the first 30 seconds of it is, when you have a school budget that passed, the state sends you your money. Okay? About five and a half minutes into it, it breaks down. When you pay your taxes for either your business or your personal, that money goes to not pay your, into the general education fund. Act 127, remember it. That's the new law that got enacted in 2022 that redistributes how the state spends money, how they send it back to you. So over in Grand Isle, I was on the internet the other night, it blew my mind. Grand Isle, once they pass their budget, they are ascending school to a school in New York. Your tax dollars go to Grand Isle and across the pond to that tuition school.
Because Grand Isle's budget is part of the statewide budget, and the state has to educate their kids. And in Grand Isle, they have choice, and they can choose a school in New York State. So the state spends education money, it raised...
What you're, what you're thinking of, Charlie, is you're thinking of Johnson. What you're, what you're thinking of, Charlie, is you're thinking of Johnson. Johnson passes a village or a town budget, that's isolated to the taxpayers of Johnson. Okay, so that's that budget. And once you get to the school budget like we're dealing with now, your tax dollars are going to Montpelier, joining the general education fund. Okay? So what's the difference between if I pass the budget on the first go or the second go? The money still comes out of. When you vote a budget down the first time, the taxpayers are saying to this board, cut the budget because we don't like what you did. Okay? So when we cut that budget down, those tax dollars are now, where we were and where we are, that space in between, Bennington might have passed their budget and they're taking advantage of your tax dollars. Because you think you're saving money in the school, but you're really not. You're sending it to somebody else to use.
So in other words, if we cut the budget 10%, we usually see a very small fraction.
So Bennington passed their budget, it was $10 million. And first, on the first go around, they get $10 million. We don't pass our budget, does Bennington get any more money? No. It just sets it in a general education fund for somebody else to come and get.
And their tax rate is going down, as well as our tax rate going down. So it's a very tricky thing, and we can get into big detail during the information meetings, so come to that and ask these questions.
It's adjusted every year based on what passes, right?
It's adjusted every year based on estimate.
To educate the public a little better on.
And that seven-minute video was a great one.
Charlie, I'm going to send you that video. So we should pass a budget. You said you went with the middle ground, you had a low budget.
You still, it still impacts your tax rate, and we just heard from our legislative update that the governor said if we keep it to that 5.9 or below across the state, and I can tell you a lot of my counterparts across the state are doing that, maybe he's going to pull some magic money out and just keep no increases. But let's get to the bottom of this, and it's great news. There is still a local impact by the local budget. It's just not a local budget, right? It's all part of a big state budget. So I think this motion is still out there. Yes.
All those in favor of passing this budget, say aye. Those who abstained?
So now we're on.
Patty, what's option?
So just because I'm crazy like this. I'm thinking maybe that YouTube video should be shown at these informational meetings.
Yeah, they will be. It was shown at the community meetings, and it'll be shown at the information.
Okay. We got to be transparent, after all.
So Modified Unified Union School District, which has an elementary component, and then the high school, middle school, secondary schools. Again, the Finance Committee wanted to meet early, especially in light of the budget struggles. There were three levels they sort of asked for. What's the worst case? And what does it mean to impacts on instruction? When they heard back, it was severe impacts on instruction, and it wasn't reasonable. We couldn't do what we are here to do. Full increases and moderate increases. At the same time, we have the new policy on class size. So administrators spending time to develop their budgets based on the needs of their schools, as well as strategically implementing the new class size policy and getting that work off the page. Their overall investments were able to find savings without jeopardizing the delivery of services. The budgets were shared and reviewed with the Finance Capital Committee throughout the process. We've also asked to use surpluses to help hold the ed spending to no more than a 2% increase. And we are able to provide this year a year-to-year comparison, later in the slides, of the 25 to 26 taxing considerations under the new statewide adjustment factor. The tail end of the legislature last year, they decided it would be great to just add one more piece of math to the ed funding calculation, so they did a statewide adjustment effect. Again, we're looking at revenue increases of about 21%, and a bulk of that is the surplus coming out of 2024. There was a lot of facilities work that had been budgeted that wasn't able to get done, as well as positions that we weren't able to fill. We also anticipate strong interest in Medicaid through the year again. We lost the small school grant because that money is now embedded in the new student weighting. However, additional state categorical aid has been put forward for ELL. Expenses are in total up about 3.4%. This is all elementary, 3.4% of the elementary. But at the end, your ed spending is 2%, well under the 5.9, the governor's. Again, three-quarters of expenditures at the elementary are direct instruction and student services. I'm going to follow, be careful. And then we've got transportation and school nutrition, and if you're to ask me, information and safety are all additional parts of student supports and services. We break them out because people are interested in it. The assessment, now this is the administrative parts coming over from the SU are less than 5% of the overall school budgets for the elementaries. Same piece of pie. I should have, well, I'm not good enough yet, I'll admit, I'm not good enough, to manipulate these, to put transportation and school nutrition all together with student supports. If I was, I'd do the same thing entirely. Are there questions on the elementary schools so far? So Mused B is our high school, middle school, our secondary. Again, we're looking at, this is the same, it's just the, the numbers always get me because they're so close, about a 21% increase. Interest remaining strong, we've got the surplus coming over. Medicaid about equal. We had a good Medicaid year in, whatever, last year and the year before, so we, we built Medicaid in, in '25. State categorical aid coming in strong, where it never used to be, the secondary. And then a modest 1 and 1/2% increase in expenditures for an ed spending increase of less than 1%. Instruction again, almost 80%. Instruction and student services, almost 80% of the budget. You start to add transportation, school nutrition, information technology. A huge majority of the budget is student-centric, instruction is student-centric. Again, less than 4 and 1/2% on the assessment. We also have started to see the benefit of some of the old bonds maturing. Are there questions on the high school, middle school? So this is our great tax calculation. We have an overall miniscule increase in overall students at the secondary level. These are the long-term weighted counts. They take our average daily membership, and then they add those weights for poverty, for English language learners, for grade level, for, I can't think of them all off the top of my head. We have a nice little 2 and 1/2% increase at the elementary for the Mused, and a slight decrease, less than 1%, for the Mused secondary students. On top of that, so this is, is there a pointer on this? So the statewide adjustment has basically said, we're going to adjust your common level of appraisal, which is already confusing enough, but now they're going to adjust it. So the 72.36% at the very top is the average common level of appraisal. Yeah, average. They took them all, they decided when you divide by the number of them, it's 70. So now they take that number and your town's common level of appraisal, and they divide it into the town's common level of appraisal, which raises that common level of appraisal. But you have to then do the same thing to your yield, but you're multiplying. Is that right? Am I saying that right? So that you're not changing the overall calculation, you're just putting pressures in a different place. So ultimately, and someone thankfully, before she left the AOE, gave us a 25 adjustment if it had existed for the current year, and I was able to adjust the 25 numbers so that you're actually seeing the yield go up almost $1,000. That's a huge benefit. That pushes your tax rates down. And it's not what we heard on December 1st, but in the last couple of weeks, in meetings with my counterparts and others across the state, the results we're seeing are not as surprising as they were a month ago when we did this. In a good way, Charlie. So we come down to, this is the, the elementaries, our 2% increase in ed spending. We divide that by our number of pupils, comes up to our spending per pupil. It's an increase of about a half a percent. We divide our spending per pupil by the yield, and so it's an elementary tax rate, the more common level of appraisal, and that. And 49% of the Modified Unified Kids are at the elementary. So 49% of this becomes the elementary's contribution to the tax rate, which is a decrease of almost 11%. The same calculation at the high school level, ed spending increased less than 1%. Our student numbers about flat, gives us a slight increase in ed spending per student of .9. Divide by the same yield gives us the high school district rate, almost 51% of the Mused students are at the secondary level, so they get 51%. I'm not an expert at this, I wasn't there when it was created, I know the flow of math. Which gives us, before we get to the town common level of appraisal, a reduction in the overall tax rate we combined with 11%. When it was first done, and like I said, my counterparts across the state were like, this is not what we were told was going to happen. Are we doing something wrong? Now, we've been doing this for decades. There's a lot of experience in my position across the state, and we were all just a little flabbergasted. So if we stopped here, it'd be like $195 savings if you had $100,000 home. Your taxes are going down. Once we add the common level of appraisal, we still see the tax rates going down, double digits sometimes. 6%, almost 10%. So between the work of the districts to be conservative but still meet the needs of the schools, and the yield work that the state has done, is yielding positive pressure on the tax rates. Are there any questions so far? What I'm whipping through, it's been a long day. Got a question on these?
So common level appraisal, Johnson's close to accurate.
She's locked out.
Okay, thank you.
And these common levels of appraisal look great, but remember, it's been divided by.
But I'm looking at, looks like Belvedere and Johnson are pretty close to one.
So in recap, long-term ADM, 2 and 1/2% growth at the elementary, half a percent decrease at the secondary, the general fund budget increases of 3.4%, expenses increased at elementary, 1 and 1/2 at the secondary or high school, middle school. Education spending increases is where it really counts, because that's the number that gets to your taxes. 2% at the elementary level, less than 1% at the secondary. Spending for long-term ADM, again, less than 1% on either of them, half a percent reduction at the elementary, and almost 1% increase at the secondary, and district tax rate decreases of 11%. And that increase in the yield is not a small part of that, but the other big part is the control on the expenses. Any more? Oh, yeah, this is just extending out, you know, if it's 195 for $100,000, it's 390 for $200,000. That might have been me late at night thinking it was a good idea, now I'm like, it's meaningless. So Mark, for the questions, I would move to adopt as presented.
Any other questions?
So Mark and Supra, can we do them as two separate ones, that Cambridge can only approve the motions on the Mused B?
The high school and the elementary schools.
I don't know if we did that, but. So would you, would you, okay, so amended. I would ask for a motion to adopt the elementary schools as presented.
Any further questions? Seeing and hearing done on TV, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who abstained?
Cambridge abstains.
And then I would ask for a motion to adopt the Modified Unified Secondary Budget as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the secondary budget, say aye.
Aye.
Those who abstained? Okay.
All right, hang with me 10 more minutes here. Couple more numbers to throw at you regarding the tech center budget for next year. So bottom line, I'm bringing forward a budget of $4,191,223, which is a difference of about $218,000. It's a 5.5% increase over last year, the per pupil tuition amount billed to schools of $13,914, which is a tuition difference of $1,715 over last year. There are a number of factors that are driving that increase, even though it's only a 5.5% increase, I'll try and break that down just a little bit for you. Here's how our expenses are breaking down in terms of increases. Our salaries are up $108,000, that is including the, the most recent or the new master agreement rates for everything, so that was just amended to include that. So salaries and benefits of our current staffing combined for about 70% of that entire increase. Our SU assessment has gone up 40, almost $41,000 based on the number of students that we have in our school this year, at 157, which is a significant increase. Our supplies, our, our program supply lines have been level funded with the exception of one program, which is our engineering program. If you recall, engineering has been funded over the last two years, and then next year will be our last year of that through the time grant so that we can get that program off the ground. The time grant has been paying for that instructor's salary benefits and. and for equipment and supplies going into that program, but it's time we start moving some of the cost of that into the budget, so that it's not new going into FY '27. And then we have a pretty small IT and maintenance budget increase there as well. There are some other interesting things that are happening to CTE this year that's impacting our overall, our overall costs. The biggest one being that our state aid has been reduced pretty significantly from last year to this year. Last year, we were receiving $11,365 per pupil in on-behalf payments. And if you don't know this, about half of the total cost of tuition to our center is paid by the state. And they come in the form of this on-behalf payment, there's a calculation for that. It's about 82% of the base ed per pupil student rate. And then the tuition assistance per pupil rate also went down. So in FY '25, for the on-behalf, it was 11,365, it has now gone down to 11,021. This is the first time in two decades that we've seen that happen, that CTE is receiving less funding from the state in order to enroll students. So there, we lost about $62,000 in state aid with that. And given Governor Scott's emphasis on the importance of career and technical education, the Vermont Directors Association has gone to his administration to say, hey, just take a look at what some of these decisions do, particularly to CTE. So we're seeing a little less in state aid that way. The other thing that is impacting us, as you can see, our enrollment trend. So we calculate that state aid based on the six semester average. You can see the numbers of student enrollments across our six semester average here. You can see that we were in the low 120s, 119 was our low point last spring, and now this year, we're up to 157. Obviously, we are really pushing to keep that trend going. The 157 in here definitely helps keep that six semester average from falling. It hasn't yet helped us move upwards. So I hope that by next year, when I come to you, this spring, at in the mid to upper 150s, and then another set of fall enrollments that would be up there as well, as we work on the admissions process right now for next year. So, the six semester average obviously has a huge impact on the overall tuition rates for our students and for our school. So if we look at the math of how that gets calculated, the budget is 4.191. We have right now expected revenues of $408,000 in state grants and aid, as well as, of state grants, and then we have 1.9 million, almost 2 million in state aid. That leaves us with tuition re-raised of about 1.8 million. We divide that out by the six semester average of 128.83 students, and we get a per pupil tuition billed out to schools of $13,914 is where we're at. So just some of the things I've already actually touched on. The primary drivers for the increase, the 5.5% increase are the staff, cost of staff, salaries and benefits. 70% of that encompasses the majority of the entire increase. We've level funded all of our program supply lines for this year, knowing what we need to do for our budgets this year, with the exception of the engineering program, understanding that the full cost of the engineering program will need to be budgeted for in FY '19, including the salaries and benefits of that teacher, which will have impact on the revenue. A couple other things to point out about our budget. We did offset some of the revenue with some mechanisms that we have to be able to support keeping our tuition rates down. We did put $48,219 from the Tuition Reduction Reserve Fund, which we do have in hold for Green Mountain Tech, to revenue for FY '26. We have about $21,000, $22,000 left in that fund. And then we had a $39,000 surplus rolling out of last year. All of that will be applied to revenue for next year. So that then brings the tuition rate down. But there is a third piece that the RAB was grappling with quite a bit, and I'll try my best to explain it to you, Deb, I may need your help on some of this. But there is an unallocated amount of money associated with Green Mountain Tech at the rate of $89,127, stemming from, I think, two years of previous surpluses that have not been allocated to either a fund or to be rolled into revenue. And so we have to decide what to do with that and make sure that it gets on and won and voted on. So we talked about in the RAB that portions of all of those funds could be applied to the FY '26 revenue, which could artificially suppress the tuition in a way that tuition costs might rebound the year after in a way that might be tough to navigate. We can take that and put part of it in the Capital Reserve Fund for Green Mountain Tech, or put more money in the Tuition Reserve Fund. Or we could potentially create another fund, which to help absorb the substantial costs of participation in our national CTSO organizations and events. So this is a piece that I began talking to the RAB about last spring. We are seeing great success with our CTSOs. So CTSOs, if you don't recall, that we're talking Skills USA, HOSA, FFA, FBLA. These are all the things that our students compete in. National organizations that our students compete in, both at the state level, and if they earn a spot, they end up competing at nationals. We have seen great success there, and we are sending students, you know, anywhere from five to, last year, we had 12 students attending FBLA, because they won first place in either computer networking or electrical or what have you. The cost of sending students to these, it's really hard to budget for, because A, we don't know how many students might be going to these, and B, the organizations themselves and the events are really expensive. We're talking the cost of flights, we're talking the cost of hotels, staying out at these places, and these organizations require us to use very specific hotels and things like that when we go. We're not allowed to find our own deals. They say it's a rate, it is not. So, so we've, over the last couple of years, really tapped out all of our reserves for being able to support sending our kids to nationals, where we've had, again, success. So the idea was, could we potentially have yet another reserve fund that some amount of money could go into to support these exceptional costs when they're out there? And so what the RAB suggested is that we create a contingency fund that wouldn't necessarily just address something like the cost of CTSOs, but also help us in the process, or help fund the process of recruiting people out of industry, into the profession, into the tech center, as we are seeing a couple of turnovers in our staff, and it is quite a process to really be able to reach out and do the sort of things we need to do within industry to entice people out to come and teach here at Green Mountain Tech. So they were hoping that we, or were thinking that they could create a fund that could be used a little more flexibly between those two things, and they called it the contingency fund. Anything to add there?
No, I've got something in the warning.
Okay, so I guess the two things that we would be looking for is, first of all, and I'd have to discuss questions, concerns that you might have here, and then we can talk about, that would be two motions, one for.
There's a lot of motions. I'll guess.
And then, oh, so, and what I guess what I didn't explain is to take the $89,000 that we have hanging out there and split it between the Tuition Reduction Reserve Fund and the Contingency Reserve Fund, to keep those healthy and have capacity there. So I would be looking for a motion then to approve the budget as presented, depending on whether or not folks have questions or concerns. And then a motion to create the Contingency Reserve Fund and split that excess fund between those two funds, reserve funds.
So do we have a motion on the first part?
I'll move. Second.
Smallest in favor of splitting the money?
Well, no, the first one would be.
So, those in favor of passing the overall Green Mountain Tech budget, say aye.
Aye.
Those who abstained? Only things on the screen for me to talk to. And the second motion would be this.
I'm not sure, does that two motions, though? Is it, can you create a fund?
I think, excepting as presented, covers it all.
Yeah, that sounds great.
I'll make a motion to accept the RAB's recommendations to split the surplus between the Tuition Reduction Reserve Fund and the Contingency Reserve Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those who abstained? Okay.
Cool, thank you all very much.
Warning. Okay, so I think what I called it was creating a reserve. It's in the first group here. So the voter, no, where is it? Okay, no, you just stop. Establish a special reserve fund for future unanticipated costs associated with emerging program. I think we want to change that, emerging programs needs? For like, the engineering program came to mind, too.
Yeah.
When the, when the grant runs out, and.
Sure.
Emerging programs? I want to say programming needs, okay.
Do you have to deem it?
Yeah, you can fix it. No, I think we.
Okay, I'm good.
The label of it is, it's just an accounting thing. So I guess back to the top.
Do we have to vote on it again?
No, no, we're just building the warning now. So then if we go to the top, this is the dreadful part, I'm so sorry. There we go, almost. I'm sorry, I'm pointing the wrong way. All right, warning that the voters meet. K through 12. We got all the towns in here. Insisting on the town of School District of Cambridge, Belvedere, Eden, Hyde Park, Johnson and Waterville. Pre-K through 12. Grade 7 through 12, and Belvedere, okay. February 17th, 25, at 7:00 PM, is that the right time for the annual meeting? 7:00 PM?
I'll double check.
I'll double check that 17th is correct.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, Deb.
First article is to determine if Roberts rules. Second article is to review and approve the minutes of the February 19th, '24 meeting to elect the officers, moderator, clerk, treasurer, to establish compensation for the duly constituted officers in the Board of Directors of the Modified Unified School District, to hear and act upon the modified reports of the Modified Unified. I get up and I talk about cash and the treasurer's report, stuff like that. I will check my Roman numerals. To receive from the Board of Directors, the estimated expenses of the grade schools for the ensuing year. Want to be sure that when we get down to the budget vote article, that it is 14. To receive from the school board, the budget of the high school. Want to make sure that it is article 15, when we get down to the second page. Article 8, to receive Green Mountain Tech's budget, should be article 16. Article 9, and this is all happening at the annual meeting. Article 9, okay. So in approving the budget, we're putting 253,981 of the pre-K into capital reserve. The elementary, the elementary MUSE does not have a capital reserve and has not had anything in it for 18 months to two years. This is the first opportunity to do this. This is the balance of the surplus coming out of '24 that wasn't applied to the budget. To establish a new fund for Green Mountain Technology and Career for unanticipated costs associated with emerging programming needs. If you can draw it. 11 is to put 44,000, half of the 89, into the already established reserve for the, this one. The anticipated, unanticipated, associated, costs associated with emerging programming needs. Okay. And then the other half into the Tuition Reserve Fund. Then to transact any more business coming before the meeting. You can go to the next page, I think. So then the meeting is temporarily recessed until March 4th is town meeting day. Make sure that's correct. Same language every year, every year, every year. Legal voters are warned, too. Article 14. Should we just go up and make sure Article 14 is referenced in the elementary school budget article? Okay, Article 14, then 15 and 16, okay. So Article 14 is the budget expense, the spending per student, and that it's 0.57% lower than the spending for the current year. This language is estimated that this spending is changed. Our student was suspended for several years, it's now back as a requirement. So it has. Article 15, for the secondary, 20,81, 12.27 per long-term weighted average daily membership. The 0.87 lower, higher, I'm getting my higher and lower. Lower here, higher there, okay? And then 4.191823 for the Career Tech and Career Center. This warning, look.
You don't need to state any increases, you're over here for the tech.
No. I don't think we actually adopted this formally. We just sort of created together, and a chance for everyone to look at it and say.
We'll double check all the dates and numbers, just to be sure that everything is correct.
And then we'll get rid of the yellow. And then Donna will come and sign it, and we make ballots, we're off to the races.
The, not opposing it, but is the budget for the tech, the special fund for the tech center that you were just talking about, that wording there? That one article you have written, it just states, shall we create a fund?
So you have to actually vote on creating a fund first?
Is there any way to word that, to explain to people that the fund's already funded? Like, you have the money, you just want to create a new one to move it?
Yeah, this is sort of just a technical exercise in language. So you have to create a fund, and then you fund it.
Right, but you're funding it with money you already have, already, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't, I'm just pointing out that if you hand that out to regular voters, they think they're spending money that, they're like, why are we creating a new fund? The money's already there, so.
That's all happening at the annual meeting, so it's the room here. People in the room will vote on that.
That's fine, yeah, that, okay, I just wanted to make sure that. If they don't understand, the money's already there, they're not voting to spend more money, that it doesn't already exist.
We'll all be here to be able to talk about it, because that's happening at the annual meeting, rather than on a ballot.
I just wanted to make.
I agree with you, they're like, why are you creating a fund, there's no money associated. Very good. Thank you.
You're still on?
Still on?
Next, you're done, I know. Announce tuition.
Vote tuition. Yay! Every year, the board gets to set its tuition, you don't have to, we can let it default to what the current year's tuition is, but based on the budgets we just passed, the recommendation is to set the elementary school tuition at 14,500, the union school at 12,275, and GMTCC at 29,369. And that's the total, that's the state aid plus the sending schools, so don't be, you know, frightened by that number. So I would ask for a motion, actually, ask for a motion to set tuition for the Modified Unified grades K through 6 at 14,500 for the year.
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this tuition at 14,500, say aye.
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 Those who abstained?
Cambridge abstains.
Okay.
I would ask for a motion to announce modified unified tuition for grades 7 through 12 and GMTCC students for 12,275 and 29,369 respectively.
One motion or two separate?
Same.
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the last two tuition costs, say aye.
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 Those who abstained? Okay.
Thank you. Yay!
And if the board approves, we're going to skip over the administrator update. Other business? If there's no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn? Say, you're adjourned.